I think we go.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:30 on Tuesday, June 30th, 2020, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, on March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure public access to the deliberations of the public body through adequate alternative means. In this case, we're utilizing Zoom, and we've listed information about joining the meeting on the school district website. Just one other reminder, this meeting is being recorded both audio and video, and will be posted on the school district website. First item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the May 12th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Mrs. Perangely, would you pull the committee?
Sure. Mr. Adamopolis?
Yes.
Ms. Blythe?
Yes.
Ms. Snapperata?
Yes.
Ms. Millet?
Yes.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
Is that the right thing, Madam Chairperson? I didn't quite know what to say there.
That's fine. So it's a unanimous vote, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the June 9th, 2020 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion in two seconds. Any further discussion? Mrs. Perangely, would you pull the committee, please?
I think Mrs. Glennon is back, or Mrs. Marazo. Are you all set and up and running? Oh, you're off. No mic, Lori. Oh, she can hear us. She's halfway there. All right, I'll jump in.
Call the committee.
Mr. Adamopolis?
Yes.
Ms. Blythe?
Yes.
Ms. Snapperata?
Yes.
Mrs. Millet?
Yes.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes. The motion passes with unanimous vote. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. How is everyone tonight?
Pretty good.
Awesome. I have a lengthy report for you, so bear with me. I'm very pleased tonight to start with a personnel update to let you know that I've hired Mrs. Gina Nieves as the interim assistant principal over at Bartlett High School. She was unable to be with us tonight, but she will be at a future meeting to be recognized. I have received the retirement notification from Mrs. Alicia Wisniewski. She has notified me of her intent to retire at the end of October. I want to just give a shout out to Mrs. Wisniewski. She's worked as a school psychologist for the past 19 years for the Webster Public Schools, and she will certainly be missed by everyone, and we're very glad that we have her until October, the end of October. In your school committee packets, I have presented to you the Central Mass Collaborative Quarter One, Quarter Two, and Quarter Three reports and their meeting dates for next year. As an update, I wanted to let you know that the Oxford School Committee has approved becoming a part of the Central Mass Collaborative. That's pretty big news. The Central Mass Collaborative has been a two-member collaborative since its existence. The final draft of the Central Mass Collaborative Agreement is in the hands of the Department of Education, and we are waiting for that final approval. For our new members, the school committee did approve the acceptance of another member of this committee. And just as another update, I wanted to give you some good news. Mrs. Susan Farrell is the new executive director, and she has been doing a wonderful job. We did her evaluation and have given her proficient in all areas, and we're pleased at the work that she's doing there. She is taking a deeper dive this upcoming year at looking at curriculum instruction and assessment over at the collaborative. So I think good things will be, continue to be coming from the collaborative. For the big topic tonight, I'd like to give you an update on the governor and the commissioner's guidance for the return to school in the fall. I was on a call just at 3:30 today with the commissioner, had a call last week, and as you have received in your emails, the initial guidance for returning to the fall has been sent out to schools. I have sent it out to our families. And we have been tasked with a pretty heavy lift, and the pretty heavy lift requires us to put together three plans for school models. The Department of Education is requesting that we go back to school, and we go back to school safely. They have, I've been on multiple calls with pediatricians and medical doctors who are stating some of the advice that you will see in the initial guidance, that students are not prone to this, and through the Academy of Pediatrics, Lori's out again, they're recommending that we try to plan for a full return with our students. So I'm just going to give you a couple highlighting bullets of what we've been informed. So for the in-person model, the safety recommendations are that we would have maintained social distancing, six feet, with a minimum of three feet between student seats, measured seat to seat. The three feet is coming from the World Health Organization, and the six feet is coming from the CDC. All students grades two and up, all adults, and all bus drivers will be mandated to wear masks. Students in pre-K, kindergarten, and one will be strongly encouraged to wear masks. Other highlights from the in-person, when we return for in-person, we are required to have a special space for each of our nurses' offices, to have an area that people who may be contaminated with or be carrying COVID or having symptoms of COVID be in a separate area. So we're working on that. The hybrid model that the Department Commissioner of Education is asking us to draft out is a blended in-person and remote learning. There's some flexibility with what our plans could look like. The model that the commissioners talked most about is having half of your students come to school one week and the other half staying home for remote learning. The one-week, one-week, one-week-on-and-one-week-off model really will require the commissioner to relax the time on learning requirements. The time on learning requirements are 900 hours for elementary, 990 for secondary, and 425 for kindergarten. If one teacher would have to be responsible for both, there's no way that they could do that in one day. So at today's Department of Education meeting, the commissioner did receive permission from his board to, when and if there's a state of emergency, to have some flexibility with those time on learning requirements. Nothing has been finalized, but in order for a hybrid model to work with our existing staff, we would have to have that kind of set up. And then the third model that the commissioner is asking us to do would be to have a full remote plan of what learning would look like for a full remote plan. The commissioner has informed the superintendent's that a full remote plan would be different than the remote plan that we have just experienced, different in the sense that it would be a scheduled day and all the work would be graded. So again, the information that we're getting is coming out in bits and pieces, and it's coming out with a, definitely a stay tuned, more information is coming. So the more information is coming that we're waiting for is guidance on transportation, guidance on athletics, and guidance on extracurricular activities. So at this point, I just want to fill you in on what we're doing. We certainly are staying abreast of the guidance and looking at, one, maintaining a safe learning environment for all of our teachers and our students. I have formed a reopening committee. We're meeting first, our first meeting since we have the initial guidance from the commissioner on Monday, and I just want to let you know who's on that committee. We have Mrs. Parmley, Mrs. Mackay, Lois Taylor from the before and after-school program, Lisa Cotter, our speech and language teacher over at Park Ave, Monique Canty, a paraprofessional, Sarah Phillips, our school nurse, Lauren Gallotti, a kindergarten teacher, Deb Castellani, grade-two teacher, Janet Labonte, an ELL teacher, Deb Pushes, our reading specialist. From the middle school, we have Heidi Peterson, the principal, Danielle Jalbert, the school nurse, the Patty Cormier, grade-five teacher, Jen Bankston, a STEM teacher, Michael Sweeney, Ellen Pelletier, and Jen Carey, the guidance counselors. From the high school, we have Fran Thomas, the principal, Kathy Pepin, the school nurse, Peter Carney, the music teacher, Chris Houston, a special education teacher, Chris Shen, the counselor. From the district central office, you have myself, Mrs. Perangely, Mrs. Ferris, Mrs. Chapdalen, Mrs. Daniels, Ellen Nyland, our food service director, and Leslie Baker, the adult education director, and I believe Ellen, who's on, it will be hopefully joining us from WEA representative. One of the things that we're doing or being tasked to do is to produce a feasibility study to actually go into all of our classrooms and measure the minimum of three feet seat to seat to see how many desks we can put in there. We will be doing that on Monday, and a lot of, some of this work has already been done. Thank you to our custodians and Mrs. Perangely for ordering PPE. We do have to do some modifications for the nurses, one of our nurses' rooms. We have put up Plexiglas at the elementary school office. We are in the process of reviewing trainings and planning our initial PD for our staff, along with all of these physical requirements of staying apart. We need to train our staff about use of proper PPE, how to take mask breaks. And again, we're waiting for guidance on transportation, athletics, extracurricular activities. The commissioner is also looking at the possibility of increasing the number of professional development days due to the training, the necessary required training that we have to do for staff, and there's been nothing final on that, but he has hinted that he is looking to possibly decrease the amount of days the kids come so that we had more days with our staff to plan for a successful transition. Before I go on, I just wanted to note if there were any questions about that.
So I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Blythe.
So for the, so if it was a remote plan, right, and you may not know these answers yet, so I'm just going to throw them out because this is what I've been thinking about. If they are a scheduled day, does that mean that they have live classes? So, you know, from this time to this time, you have a teacher that's live on a Zoom or whatever, whatever it's going to be that we're going to be used. Is that the plan?
I anticipate that there will be some live classes as we left off, and much more structured timeframes for those classes, because if we're grading the work, the content has to be given and the students have to be doing the work. So it will be more rigorous than it was, and we did a very good job. I want to again give a great shout out to our teachers. I don't have the final answers. What needs to happen is all three of these plans need to go to the Department of Education.
Right.
And for any school that is not capable of maintaining that distance, that minimum distance of three feet, and wants to go to a hybrid model, which is a week on or a week off, or whatever you figure, the Department of Education will be coming out to ensure that that is the only possible way that you can do it, because there is a push to get the students back into school.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, any other questions before I?
I have one more, sorry. And you may not know the answer to this one, but the, so because the symptoms keep changing, right, and the CDC keeps adding symptoms, and they just added, you know, now it's a stuffy nose and congestion, and, you know, I won't go on with the other two. But how, I guess, how is that going to be handled, right? So say Johnny goes down to the nurse and he has symptoms. Is it a full-blown, oh, we're shutting the schools down, or is it more of a, let's see how this goes, or do you not know yet? You know, it's, it's hard to, I know it's hard to say.
There will be protocols for suspected cases of COVID. We had those protocols in place before we closed, to be honest with you. I mean, it was around, and they will be tightened and communicated to families. I don't want to say that we're going to send the alarm bells off with the runt nose. There are particular symptoms. Our school nurses can speak to that. They're part of our reentry committee. They're already working with me behind the scenes on, you know, we really have to send strong messages to our families. If children do not feel well, they shouldn't come to school, especially during this. If staff don't feel well, they shouldn't come to school. So all of that plays into this. I will say it's going to be tricky, and it's going, there are going to be some sticky moments, and there's a strong possibility that we could start out in school, end up in a hybrid, end up in a remote, end up in a hybrid, back in school, and I think that we have to be prepared for the unknown, and I think it's very uncomfortable. I, as the leader of the district, this is hard work because we are in a little bit of an ongoing limbo, and each week we're getting some information and we're building plans, but I am going to bring our plans to you. I'll bring, share what we create and where we are in the process of creating those. So to gather some feedback.
Thank you.
You're welcome. To gather some feedback from our families, a survey has gone out, and the survey, I'll just give you a snippet. We just wanted a snapshot in time of what families felt, would they send their kids back at this moment of time? And I want to give you some of the high overview. There were 216 families that responded. Eighty-eight percent of that 216 said that they would send their students back in the fall. Twelve percent said they would not. Seventy-two point seven percent, they would not choose to keep their students home, and twenty-seven point three percent said that they would choose to do remote learning from home. Our parents' worries really range from students with medical issues, students not wanting to wear masks. Some students have reported they like remote learning better. Others did not like remote learning. There were concerns, and I've been talking to parents about their concerns, that they're, they just don't feel safe. So there's a broad mixture of feelings out there. We, in collecting the data, we also took the opportunity to ask about access to the internet, and I'm really pleased to say that only 11% of our students, our families, said that they needed internet access. Eighty-eight point nine percent of our students have access. As you know, we've given our students grades two through 12 Chromebooks to use, and we are waiting to hear on a grant for some devices for our kindergarten and first graders. When the commissioner spoke to us the other day, he did tell us that there's some new money out there, $25 million worth of matching grant for, to help districts in need of hotspots. So we're in the process of actually kind of collecting addresses of those people who may need access to internet to help close that gap right there. We also asked our families if they wanted, or if they would rely on our bus transportation. Fifty percent of them said that they would rely on our bus transportation, and 50% said that they'd self-transport. We also did ask if any of our families who needed food assistance. We have 16.2% of our families that are in need of food assistance. So those are some of the updates on where we're at with collecting data to create viable plans. Of course, if we went to a hybrid model, we would want to know how many students are in one family. They would have to be on the same week on, week off. But we're going, we're in the process of putting the three plans together. Any questions on that before I move on to another topic?
I just had a quick question, Madam Chair. So I'm wondering kind of what your thoughts are working with this team, and if it, what comes up in discussions with Desi regarding childcare and these hybrid models, I mean, to send just your children to school one week and have them home the next week for working parents seems very difficult.
It does. They don't have specific answers around that. I think the, the information that they talked about today at the Department of Education Board meeting really focused on the medical view that they thought it was more detrimental for students to stay home, and that it's better for kids to go to school, and that this coronavirus is going to be with us for years, and we as the adults really need to model wearing a mask and normalizing this to some extent. They, they're not giving us guidance on childcare. They're, the guidance on, it's a parent's choice if they want to send their students to school. And it's a wait-and-see. So unfortunately, you know, they're, they're promoting summer camps to be, being open. We're waiting for guidance on athletics. So I don't have the full answer to that, Kathy.
Right. I guess I'm thinking like, when you're doing your planning with your team, will, will you be thinking about the impact of not having, not being able to send your child to school? Which parents rely on a lot for childcare purposes.
See, we're in a very difficult position. I'm going to be quite honest with you. If we do a walkthrough on all of our classrooms and we cannot put all of our kids in a classroom with at least three feet apart, we have to look at other spaces. So for example, we could look at a library and then pull another teacher who's not, who may not be teaching a classroom and rearrange our staff and have that teacher teach a grade class. We would have to hire more teachers. So in order to make sure everybody came at the time, if we can't get the three feet. In our initial review, we may be able to fit in some classrooms. We're, we're not going to be able to, I have to produce a plan, so I'm not going to be able to not produce the plan for the Department of Education based on childcare. I have to produce the plan based on the safety guidelines, whether we can produce and maintain those safety guidelines that are clearly outlined in the plan and, and see if that works. If that doesn't work, then we would have to, you know, we'd have to have it ready. Here's the hybrid model. This is what it would look like. And then if in fact we ever went into a state of emergency again, we would have to have that remote plan ready to go. It, it's, keeps me up at night. I don't know what else to say. And as a superintendent, and the superintendents are looking for specific, direct, so that all districts are kind of doing the same thing, and that's not going to happen. So.
Thank you.
Through the chair, just a quick question. If, how are, how's a district going to handle if a family doesn't feel comfortable sending their child back to school, or if the child has an underlying issue that would make them more susceptible of this? Are they just going to be treated as absent, absent, or do we have to put a plan in place for those families?
That's a very good question. We were anticipating that we would have to do a remote learning plan for those children. You know, we are obligated to educate all students. Today's call, there was some mention that we wouldn't want to be doing both at the same time. I have had conversations with families that are considering homeschooling. We certainly don't want to promote that. We want our kids to be part of their Webster School community. So I anticipate that we'll probably have to do both, but I'm again waiting for specific guidance. It depends on the numbers as well.
Thank you.
It certainly sounds like a logistical nightmare from all fronts for families that are trying to work through this, but also running up any business, a school for that matter. You know, one thing that we haven't even talked about, and I'm not going to ask to address Dr. Gogan, is staffing, and, you know, if we have teachers that are, that are out, they're now out for an extended period, which causes a whole other litany of issues when it comes to coverage and everything else. So I don't envy your thought to be producing these plans.
Well, we're, we're going to produce the plans collaboratively with our, with our folks. That's why we have a large team. And we just have to be ready for three contingencies. Our goal is to try to get kids back into school and to do it safely, and we're going to try, we're going to try our best. I have some other information to share, if, and I'm happy to answer any questions if, you know, after tonight, you want to give me a call or send me an email. I'm happy to answer any questions. I wanted to just give you an update on some kind of awesome opportunities that are happening even amidst all of this chaos in the Webster Public School District. We are really working still to support our teachers and provide meaningful professional development, and we're being really creative. I've asked Director of Curriculum of Math and Science, Jill Chapdalen, to come tonight just to speak briefly about some of the wonderful opportunities that are happening. Jill?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here. I wanted to really assure everyone and alleviate some concerns with everything going on and with the uncertainty, that Webster, I really believe Webster's on the forefront of preparing math instruction for the fall. As the curriculum office, we recognize that teachers, students, families are all concerned about uncertainties, the impact of the school closure. We know that teachers needed that opportunity to discuss the challenges that they faced teaching remotely during pandemic to consider the best approach for teaching in the fall. And so we created a structure for our teachers to come together and to collaborate and to plan the reentry back to school. We wanted this to happen in June. We wanted it to be research-based. We wanted to consider social emotional needs of the students and staff, and we wanted to focus on closing the gap, not widening it. Thanks to our, with Looney Math, they've been working diligently to respond to the pandemic, and their work is, it's quite cutting-edge. And also thanks to Lois Taylor's 21st CCLC grant, we were able to provide 26 teachers at Park Ave with a comprehensive PD offering that consisted of virtual coaching sessions with Looney on June 17th, 19th, and 23rd, reading assignments before and after each session, and offline time to plan for the fall in grade-level teams. The initial feedback was incredible. And interestingly enough, everyone who attended asked if they could have an extension in more time through July. And so what did we do? We went back and asked the grant donors if we could get some more funding, and we got it. So they're going to have another day on July 13th and some additional offline time to continue to work on this grade-level planning for the fall, and they have to think about the three contingencies that Ruthanne mentioned. We also decided to offer a similar experience to Webster Middle School using Title II-A grant funding, and so we're going to have their virtual sessions on July 10th, 13th, 14th, and 15th, and those who participate will also be given time for planning. We're hoping to include Bartlett High School in this offering as well. We're working on that right now. The bottom line is, at the end of all of this, our teachers are going to be able to create year-long outlook maps. They can't follow the curriculum maps they have now. They're going to create new ones. They're going to finish a first unit of instruction, and they're going to plan for face-to-face, distance learning, and also hybrid instruction. It's really fascinating what the teachers have been able to do with this. I would also like to mention that we have four teachers in grades seven and eight currently taking CPM PD. Our grade-eight honors class has been using at the middle school, so we're moving forward in math, which is really exciting despite everything that's happening. We're still forging ahead, and we're going to actually be teaching the course three of CPM to grade eight, and we're starting a new honors seven class, and we trained the seventh-grade teachers to be able to deliver that as well. So I'm very excited to tell you that there is movement forward. And we trained the seventh grade teachers to be able to deliver that as well. So I'm very excited to tell you that there is movement forward. I think we're at the cutting edge. I really do. And it comes to, you know, we got started right in June, two days after school closed.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
I also wanted to inform the committee that through my partnership with MahFrey, we are in the initial phases of talking with One Goal. One Goal is an organization that comes into schools and helps trains, train teachers to work with juniors and seniors to develop a course that's specifically designed for helping kids with the college application pathway. And it there's a set curriculum. They are specifically focused on students that have middle of the range, grade point average in their low income and their first generation college students. So I, the high school administrative team and counselors have met with the One Goal. I met again with them today and there is some room in the schedule for potentially one cohort of of students. So the high school will be sending out some feelers to see if any of our students are interested in this course. And that may be a new offering that we begin to blend into our services for juniors and seniors to open up the pathways. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Mrs. Frangeli?
Hi, thank you. How's everybody tonight? Everybody looks engaged and they're smiling and happy to be here. So I'm just going to keep talking and move right along for you guys. The first item on the agenda is the School Building Committee update. I'm really not going to dabble into that because it's later on in the agenda and we have some exciting news to share with you. So I'll save my comments for later on. Second item on the agenda is town meeting update. As you know, last Monday, the 50th, we had, no, 22nd, we had town meeting at the Bartlett High Gymnasium. It was a little warm in there, but I've seen it worse. So we were able to rough it and surprise, survive the night in the in the gymnasium. It was a pretty quick meeting. Things moved along pretty smoothly. The town did pass a budget. It was approved with a school department amount of $21,683,533. This gives us the ability to move into the next fiscal year. We have worked closely with the town. It was a reduction from our original budget request, about a nine, $900,000 reduction. So we are actually at a lower amount than we are in FY20. So we are $135,000 less than what we are currently operating at. I think it's important to note that. But we were able to do that and keep keep our foundation. And we we worked with as little impact as possible to our staff. So I think the work was good work and I'm proud of that work. As we move forward and we get more information on chapter 70 and the finances, we expect to go back to town meeting in the fall and make any adjustments that are necessary. School department and the town are going to look to be frugal during the summer months. It's a little bit easier for us because our payroll is late in the summer. We don't have our big payrolls. So hopefully we'll have a better idea of everything as we hit hit the fall month. We also had two warrant articles that passed. We are looking at paving, refinishing the tennis courts. They have are currently in some rough shape, cracking, the poles are wobbling and falling out. And they get quite a bit of use from the town. So it's important to maintain and keep our facilities up. The other warrant article that was listed as a school article, but really is a town. To me, a town article is for the Memorial Field bleachers. That field is maintained and run by the town. We just use it for games. Those bleachers up there are rotted really bad. We were concerned this past fall about allowing access to them. So this will allow us to allow the town to get some portable bleachers and remove the old ones. Because it was really a safety risk and we were concerned about the safety of individuals. So and having them portable means we can use them in other locations. So we'll be looking forward to that. That concludes my town meeting update. Are there any questions in regards to town meeting? No? Okay. The third item is desktop audit. Back in February, I came and reported to you that we had a new audit that was scheduled as the year of audits. We've had audits like I've never seen before. So they were supposed to be coming out Monday and Tuesday of this week to audit all our Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and IDE grants for FY19. And they were going to look at some 18 financials. And then COVID happened. So I thought we were off the hook. And I was pretty excited about that, being off the hook. And it crushed my bubble a little bit. They said, sorry, we're not going to come out, but we're still going to do the audit. And they switched it to what they call a desktop review. So the desktop review is going to happen in two phases. It was supposed to start with phase one. They were going to send out a questionnaire on Tuesday, June 16th. To date, we have not received that questionnaire. So I'm trying not to get too excited, but I expect it soon. That's going to ask us, I think, about operational, how we handle our financials, how we proceed with things. I'm going to have to send in our FR1s, which are our final reports. And they're going to compile a bunch of data from us. And then in the fall, they're going to be looking to come out to our district for a day, half a day or a day, and actually test what we submitted in the questionnaire. So we haven't started the audit yet. It wasn't onsite for the 29th and 30th. They changed how they're going to do that. But it's still happening and we're just waiting for it. And once it, once we get the information, we'll just jump in and get going on it. Are there any questions on that? No? Okay. And then the last item I have and other updates. I just wanted to remind families that we are still serving our summer meals program. We are currently operating out of Park Ave Elementary from 11 to 1. We are also delivering to Head Start from 11 to 12. And we continue to serve North Village. And menus are posted and up online. So I just wanted to let families know we have seen a decrease since school closed. So I don't know if that's from families not understanding that they can still get lunch that was still serving. They've started to creep back up a little bit. So that's good. But we're going to take it. You know, right now we're taking it week by week because we really think it's important to maintain that that service for our community. But we also have to look at staffing and what we have on board. So I might have to make some adjustments moving forward. But we're watching it closely and trying to promote the program and we want families to know that we're there. We're serving lunches every day, Monday through Friday. Come down and see us. The ladies produce some good quality food coming out of there, lots of fresh produce. And check out our menus online. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Frangeli. Any questions or comments? So the next item on the agenda is under Old Business. It's the third and final reading of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Policy, JICFBR. I'll entertain a motion to approve that policy.
So
Sorry.
All right, now so moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Frangeli, there's a motion and a second. Could you pull the, oh, Lori's back. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
One quick question. The paragraph that says resolved, it says district in brackets. Are we going to change that to Webster? I feel like it's supposed to have probably our district name in the actual document.
Henceforth, the district?
No, the resolve paragraph. So the second from the bottom paragraph, it says that, and then district is in brackets.
Lori, is your mic working now?
What page do you want? First page?
I only have one page. It's number 12, my packet.
Okay, number 12. Okay.
It's the resolution, correct? The anti racism resolution?
No, we're talking about the bullying intervention and intervention.
I apologize.
Okay.
Sorry.
So is there, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Does Lori have, can we hear, Lori, can we hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Would you try pulling the committee, maybe?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda under New Business is the designation of an email record keeper. I'll open it up to the committee. Anyone have a nomination?
I nominate Lori to continue to be the email record keeper.
Second.
There's a nomination and a second. Any further discussion? Lori, would you pull the committee?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion, the nomination passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the designation of a legislative representative.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Member Adamopolis.
Second. Look at the eyes.
I know the eyes.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Chairman Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is appointing a school committee member as payroll designee.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
I I nominate Chairperson Siddiqui to continue in that role.
Second.
Guys are quick. So there's a nomination and a second. Is there any further discussion? Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is appointing a school committee member as backup payroll designee.
Madam Chairperson? I nominate Sheila Blythe to continue in that position.
Second. We have a nomination and a second. Is there any further discussion? Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yes. Passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the appointing of a school committee member as the warrant designee.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
I nominate Member Mallett to be the warrant designee.
Second.
I delayed on that. Just, I want credit for delaying. Can be quick.
There's, there's a nomination and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is appointing a school committee member as backup warrant designee.
Member Chairperson?
Yes.
I nominate Sheila Blythe to continue in that position.
Second. We have a nomination and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Chairman Siddiqui? Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is a school committee statement of support regarding COVID-19 state funding resolution. Dr. Gogan?
Yes. These resolutions have been recommended through the Massachusetts School Committee Association. Many districts are signing them. This resolution is in particular focuses on state funding. With the COVID-19, there's certainly an increased cost associated with PPE. And this is your committee's way of showing that there can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. And I would recommend that the school committee seriously look at this and approve it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
The WEA also supports this statement. There have been a lot of things that the state has put out there that need funding. And it is unfair to districts to say that these things are, need to be done, but we're not going to fund them. So we also support this statement.
Thank you, Mrs. Jevers. Is there any other comments or questions about the item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a school committee statement of support regarding the school committee anti racism resolution. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. Again, I highly recommend that the school committee sign this. And yes, Mr. Adamopolis, where it does say district, it should say Webster. Amend that. Given the light of what is happening in our society and the social injustices and unconscious biases and systematic racial oppression. We, as a Webster School system, are committed to continuing to ensure a safe learning environment for all of our students regardless of race, gender, ethnicity. And this will help support us in doing that.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair, I just have a quick question. I know that this touches on changing some of the curriculum to bring in more works and I guess books by black authors. Has there been any mention about actually implementing that through the English Department or the History Department?
I believe they do that. Our teachers already do do. I believe they do that. Our teachers already do do a high level of integration. And we are culturally aware and we're looking at our books in our libraries. So this isn't something new for our district. This just supports and kind of puts it out there for everyone that we are really going to have that eye of looking at where unconscious biases exist. And looking at our curriculum at different angles and being open to those different perspectives. So we do do that. I know that each of our English teachers have a wealth of opportunities to share different experiences with our students through literature.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I do have one other comment. I just think this blends nicely with our new bullying intervention policy that we've implemented, which really takes a look at making sure that everyone is safe and what are we going to do when someone feels unsafe in our school. And so implementing very consistent protocols across our district will help us with all of that, creating that safety.
I will entertain a motion to support the school committee statement regarding the anti-racism resolution.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Berna Brata?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallet?
Yeah.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda are actually several newly created or revised job descriptions. Dr. Gogan, did you want to talk about these sort of as a, as a whole?
Briefly, I can. We've been taking a look at some of our existing positions and kind of updating job descriptions. We share the job descriptions if they're in the WEA contract to collect feedback. We are looking at the supervisors' responsibilities of the supervisor of the person in charge to make sure that we've got everything listed. Because the job description really helps us with job roles, establishing what you're supposed to be doing. So we have updated the special education team chair, the academic interventionists, the food service director, and the float nurse. And then the adult education program has updated and created new job descriptions because they didn't have many of these for their program. Mainly in the job descriptions that you're seeing related to teachers and teaching staff, we, we didn't change much. We did add the form, the physical form of what would be required for the physical responsibilities. And we changed minimal amounts. And then all of the adult education jobs, we had recommended to the director that she have job descriptions. They help in terms of evaluating staff and knowing what staff are supposed to do and when someone is coming onto a job. It helps them figure out what their role is. So we are going to continue this process. You know, we were afforded some extra time, so that's why there's so many on the list tonight.
Thank you. So, being that there are a number of job descriptions, there are two that we're going to not include in our discussion, right? Number, letters Q and R. Am I frozen?
A little bit.
How am I now?
You're good.
Better.
Okay. So there are a number of job descriptions. Letters Q and R on the agenda are going to be skipped over. But I'll entertain a motion to approve items I through Z excluding Q and R.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion about these job descriptions? Hearing none. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Berna Brata?
Yes.
Member Bligh?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallet?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. And, boy, that blew through a lot of the agenda pretty quickly, didn't it? That brings us to letter AA. Approval of surplus items, updated technology. Mrs. Perenjali, is this you?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so in your packet, you should have seen a list of items. They're either broken, outdated, and have no value. So we are looking to have them surplus. They've already been removed and are not in operation anymore.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to declare the attached list of items as obsolete and direct the business manager to auction off, donate, or otherwise recycle or dispose of these materials in conjunction with Mass General Law 30B.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lori, would you pull the committee?
Member Berna Brata?
Yes.
Member Bligh?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallet?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda, item BB, acceptance of donation from Fundación Mahfren Real Madrid. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. I believe you've heard me talk about the Real Madrid program before. I have written a grant with Tony Peranto for the Foundation Mahfren Real Madrid program. It's a sports training program for a subset of students, second language learners. You may have approved a donation months ago. But what I've learned about writing international grants are they're very, very difficult, to say the least. We have finalized our agreement with them, finally, and they have given us a nice little surprise. And the surprise is they have increased their donation to $64,000 over four years. And so over four school years. That is a, doing a training program for basketball and a training program for soccer. It's $16,000 each year for those two programs for four years. They come over and they do some training with our coaches. And Tony Peranto, our athletic director, will be managing this program. And again, it's really a specific program for our second language learners to teach students the sports, but also about group work and themselves and communicating to students in different ways through sports. So it's a prescribed program. We're excited about it. We cannot post it yet because we're waiting for the guidance from the Department of Education and MIAA on what sports will be allowed. And so they are fully in support of waiting with us from Spain. And I just asked tonight that we update the approval of their donation for $64,000 over four years.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Gogan? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation from Fundación Mahfren for the Real Madrid program. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Berna Brata?
Yes.
Member Bligh?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallet?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. And the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of donation from Fundación Mahfren Food Vouchers. Dr. Gogan?
Yes. Recently, I wrote a grant to receive some additional supports to help our families in need of additional food. We have been generously granted and have received just a little under $10,000. I think there was some transfer wire costs. That money will be used to purchase cards for food, health supplies, cleaning supplies. And we will be giving out those cards confidentially to families in need. Our guidance counselors have a list. And with the survey that I just conducted, the 16% of families that said that they needed assistance will be receiving some of these assistance cards. Again, I want to publicly thank Fundación Mahfren for their ongoing support of the Webster students and the community.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Gogan? On behalf of the committee, I think I'm frozen again, though. Am I?
I am. We can hear you fine.
Am I frozen?
You're back.
Well, after a long delay, on behalf of the committee, I just want to thank you, Dr. Gogan, for continually finding new and innovative ways to make these connections and help them to work for the students of Webster. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to accept a donation of food vouchers in the amount of approximately $10,000 from Fundación Mahfren to be used to support families in need with assistance specifically for food, personal hygiene, including supplies during the COVID-19 pandemic.
So moved.
Second, second.
So that we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. Lori, would you pull the committee?
Member Berna Brata?
Yes.
Member Bligh?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallet?
Yeah.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval of school building committee's ranking of the top three selected owners' project manager candidates for the Bartlett High School project and to enter into negotiations with the top ranked.
Hi, thank you.
Hello.
So I'll give you an overview of the process. We met as an OPM committee. Well, I'll start at the beginning. The building committee approved a small OPM committee, a subcommittee of the building committee of five members. Those five members were Dr. Gogan, myself, Mr. Avalas, Ms. Kontos, and Mr. Herten. Our job was to evaluate all the proposals that come in and come back to the school committee with a recommendation for three to five candidates. So we advertised the RFS and we received 17 proposals on Tuesday, I believe it was, or Wednesday by 2:00, the deadline for submittal. The OPM committee met on Wednesday, the 24th, to review all 17 proposals and score them with a criteria that was in the proposal. So after doing that, we came out with a ranking order. It was clear that we had three candidates that separated themselves from the rest. There was quite a bit of difference between the third and fourth candidate. So it was then that we decided to interview the top three candidates. Yesterday, we met again and we set up interviews. We had 10 questions. The three companies came in. They had an hour each. So they had 10 minutes to talk about themselves, introductions, do a PowerPoint. They had 40 minutes to answer our 10 questions. And then they had another 10 minutes to either finish up or ask us any questions they wanted to about the project. When the interviews were done, we ranked again. And they were added to the initial scores of our system for the RFS to come up with three candidates. The subcommittee went to the building committee with their three candidates in order. They are ranked at Collier's number one, Scanska number two, and CBRE Kerry number three. The subcommittee sent those to the building committee. The building committee approved those finalists to the school committee. So we are seeking your approval to accept the three finalists. And I believe that's the next motion, is to allow me to enter into negotiation with the top finalists for OPM. I wanted to thank Mr. Avalas. He's on the call. He was nominated as the chairperson of the subcommittee. So he moderated and oversaw the interviews and the RFS. So I just want to thank you, Ted, for doing that. And do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time, thank you. It was, I, just to add, we had a great response to our request. Having been part of the last two projects with the middle school in Park Ave, you couldn't help but be impressed with the quality of the applicants that we had for this project, which I think speaks a lot. People, you know, out there, OPMs really wanted to, to work with us on this project. So we ended up with, I think, any three of these finalists would have done a terrific job for us. And we were very pleased, I think, to come up with Collier as our finalist. And I'm sure Monique is, because if anyone, she's going to be married to these people for the next five to seven years. So as long as she was happy with it, we're all happy with it.
It was tough. It was very competitive. And like Mr. Avalas said, there were just a lot of good firms. And the interest out there right now is incredible. When I talked to the MSBA and told them how many proposals we received, they were, they were so happy and pleasantly surprised with the turnout. So I don't think with any, like Ted said, I don't think with any of the three companies, we could have ended up going in a wrong direction. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Gogan? You are part of the process.
I think it was a wonderful process. And I think that the companies that, the top three, you're right, they were all very strong. The company that came out number one, Collier, I think is going to really be a good advocate for us as we're working through the educational programming. Their experience on renovations and high schools was tremendous. Their references were great. I think their personalities are going to fit in with our style in Webster. And they're going to work with us to create our unique own high school with a culture that fits our community. I think that was one of the things that struck out about them for, for me, is that they're going to take the time to get to know us and listen to us and then work with us to build what we want in Webster.
Well, thank you all for all the work you've done so far and all the work that you're about to undertake, I'm sure. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
I would just mention that it was a five-hour meeting. I think it's one of the longest meetings I've attended.
You had fruit.
I know, we did have some fruit.
What is the, what is the motion that we're looking for here? To approve the, the top ranked or to approve all three of them?
To approve the top rank, three ranking candidates and to approve that the business manager can enter into negotiations with the top candidate.
The process is, just so you know, the reason why we're approving the top list, because if negotiations fail, what number one, we would move on to number two and start negotiating with number two. So the MSBA wants to see the top candidates.
Okay, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the school building committee's ranking of the top three selected owners' project manager candidates and enter into negotiations with the top ranks.
So moved.
Thanks. We have a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Berna Brata?
Yes.
Member Bligh?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallet?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like our next item on the agenda is review transfer sending of warrants, bills, payroll. And it looks like our next item on the agenda is review transfer sending of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. The first item is to approve a transfer request from Webster Middle School Student Activity Savings checking account. That's in the amount of $6,840.06. Anything to be said about that? Are we just looking for a motion here?
Just looking for a motion.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adam Mopla?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before we close out, I just want to remind all the school committee members that the two resolutions that you approved tonight, one with the modification of adding Webster, will be at Central Office for you to swing by and sign at your convenience.
Okay, thank you.
And can I just ask, when is our next meeting?
July 14.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Could I just also remind, we'll need the warrant signed. So our warrant designate, if they could pop in the office, and our payroll designate could pop in the office for signatures. I am there tomorrow and Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adam Mopla?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
All right.
Bye, everyone. Bye, everyone. Have a good night.
You too.
Take care.
Bye now.